Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the Doning Board of Appeals, Thursday, June 30th, 2022, 7 o'clock PM. And it's continued hearing on the petition of limited dividend affiliate of WP East Acquisition concerning Zero Summer Street assesses map 24 and 17, blocks 112 and 111A. So at this point, we had the architectural response, correct?
Yes.
So did you guys want to respond to that? The architects' responses? Or your responses to the architect's letter that we received?
Yes, good evening Chairman. Mark Sec, on behalf of the applicant, WP East Acquisitions LLC. I apologize Chairman, I was not able to hear you. Do you mind repeating?
We had, the last meeting we were at, we got kind of a preliminary report from the peer review architect, and then you responded with some responses.
Formally correct, yeah.
I guess we can go through that letter?
Of course, yeah.
With your responses?
Yeah, of course. Can I actually just have a handout which we can go over? There's been a layout change since our May hearing, which...
I can discuss, there's some updated renderings that were requested by the board as well.
Thank you. So just, so you know Cliff is going to be maybe on telephone?
He's on the phone right now.
He's on the telephone.
Cliff, can you say hi?
Hello.
Okay. That's the best we can do technology-wise tonight.
That works.
Thank you.
Probably have enough battery power. Okay, Mark, you can stop. So Chairman, I'll leave it up to you if you want to, if we want to just walk through it one by one, or Cliff, you know, has comments on our responses, or if there's any clarification needed further, or if we just want to go through it one by one, I'll kind of leave it up to you.
Yeah, why don't you go through it one by one?
Sure. So his first, his first comment is quite lengthy. Again, I'm happy to, you know, I'm on page, I don't think it's identified, but it's item number five?
Number five, yeah.
Correct, yeah. So let me know for that one, if you want me to read the entire kind of feedback, but...
No, just kind of give a synopsis of, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so he just made comment, you know, outlining what the development is, you know, how much gross square footage is, you know, the surrounding area. And ultimately, you know, I think he made a comment that he felt the, you know, the parking was, it was close to the dwelling units, which is for surface park suburban deal, it's pretty customary that you have a landscape buffer, a sidewalk, and then parking right there. So we provided feedback, you know, just identifying that in most locations, the setback, the parking is 15 feet, with typically having at least 10 feet of green space between the buildings and the edge of the traveled center roadway. There are select pinch points where it is less, but it is predominantly greater than 10 to 15 feet. Part B to that, he kind of talks about the open, the open space, and that would be the not, you know, non-building, so kind of open space for recreational activities and whatnot. And so we looked at several similar properties. And that actually, that will tie in further, but you know, we do have two large courtyards in addition to a lot of green space around the building that is on the planned south side of Monahan Crossing, which would be the west side. So the two courtyards do total more than 14,000 square feet. They are, it is equipped with a swimming pool, lawn games, patio, grill, fire pits. He did have a question about the grills, which they will be on timers, that they do not get left on. And the fire pits will be gassed. He had a question of whether the fire pits would be natural firewood, and they are not. I think it's important to note out as well that located, you know, less than .3 miles away, which is, you know, about a 5, 10-minute walk from the site, is the Island Grove Park, which is, which is a pretty substantial outdoor amenity space. The park contains more than 11 acres of actual trail and walkability, so certainly enough to get out and exercise or whatnot. And there is 7,000 square feet of indoor many, which we feel is just as important, especially up in, you know, a temperature in Massachusetts where majority of the year you are indoors. You know, and this was, our program for how much amenity space, both interior and exterior, it is predicated off of what we've experienced. We've built over 3,000 units in Massachusetts, you know, we kind of have a program for how much amenity space per unit we need for desirability for tenants, and that's kind of how we arrived at the square footages for both the interior and the exterior amenity. Question C is kind of not really applicable, as you'll note, it has to do with the ANRAD that is currently working its way through Conservation Commission, and I know the Conservation Commission did hire a third-party peer review, which has produced a report for the Conservation Commission, and that has been shared with Cassie, whether it was shared with the board as well, I can't confirm. So Cliff's next comment, is, is Sean, is Cliff still on the phone?
Yeah.
Okay, yep. So Cliff's next comment, he kind of just, he made, alluded to what is in the surrounding area, you know, predominantly single-family homes. There is obviously a multifamily development across the street, off of Summer Street, the woodlands, you know, and he mentions larger footprints such as Target and the Stop &amp; Shop, which, you know, the Target building, that footprint is actually 127,000 square feet, which is actually larger footprint than both of our buildings combined, and so also including our detached garages. So just kind of providing some feedback there, that there are other significantly larger footprint buildings in town, especially one right next door that's double the size. His next kind of comment that we addressed is, you know, I think he alludes that, you know, it's, it's great that it is, you know, located on a train, which, you know, the state in their eligibility letter to us and to the town identified that as well, as this is a desirable location, and we agree. You know, if you look at, you know, kind of what the purpose and intent behind the 40B program is to provide higher density and transit-oriented locations that provide affordable housing, which is what we've targeted here. So he also discussed is kind of the landscape buffer, and we actually went out and tagged the trees, and in your, in your booklet that I sent around, there is a site section, and most of the trees were about 78 feet tall, which is actually taller than what the structure will be, and if you look at kind of the site section, might be a good time to flip to the page six, you can really see that, and Mike mentioned that the dark shade...
I think those are the existing tree lines, the big ones are definitely...
Are you on, correct? Correct. So you can see that even the roofline of the building, you know, with the lower elevation on Progress Street, will be protected from that existing tree line. We further addressed, you know, he brought up again, the open space, which we've highlighted several other projects that are just located one train stop north at South Waymouth, which is, you know, very similar location, located on train. As a reminder, we have 14,000 square feet of open amenity space. The Mass Light has 7885, Camio has less than 5,000, and the Commons at Southfield has about 6,300. So in most of those cases, it's less than half of what we're providing. And this is also, we also have the interior robust amenity package as well. E, he talks about the visibility from, from the street, which again, we just identified here on the site section, that it's pretty well-hidden. Obviously, on the eastern side, you have the train tracks and the forest there that keeps it protected. To the north is obviously the MBTA train station and parking lot, there's no housing there. And then to the west side, there still is a very strong forest buffer there, with really tall mature trees that'll help kind of keep, keep the top of the buildings protected. And I think it's important to note, he did bring up shadows. Obviously, with the orientation of the site and, you know, the sun going east to west, the shadows will be projected onto Monahan's Crossing and our existing building and the train tracks, and not onto any residence properties. His next comment, he identifies the site as moderately pedestrian-friendly, primarily because there's, there's great walkability, you know, you can walk to the train, you can walk to a grocery store, Target, Dunkin' Donuts, what have it. We think for a suburban location, this is extremely walkable, and it's also all-accessed by sidewalks that the town has. So we just kind of furthered that, that the site has great access throughout, throughout the property for both vehicles and pedestrians, and nearby menus and food, Target, Stop &amp; Shop, Dunkin' Donuts, Island Grove Park, the MBTA, and the MBTA train station. We do have two, we do, or we do have two external bike rack lockups for any visitors that may come, and then we also will have an internal bike room, as we previously identified, for residents to store their bikes. A lot of them, you know, still like to prefer to keep them in their unit, but there will be a designated bike storage with bike fix-it station for the residents. So obviously, we'll be promoting, you know, bicycling when necessary. There's a question here on the school bus. We, me and Phil Cordero from Allen &amp; Major, our engineer, we did meet with Superintendent Peter Schaefer and the Assistant Superintendent Dr. Felicia Moschella, and, you know, they committed that we're going to provide bus service. Obviously, they acknowledged that this project's about three years out from lease-up, and bus routes change every single year, and that's not something that they can determine right now, and they'll look at the best location to pick up the students, depending on where the bus routes are at that time. But they are committed to, to providing service to the property. Cliff touches on EV stations. We're huge supporters of EV stations, we've done them at our last three projects. We always commit to doing so many stations day one, while also running the infrastructure so that way we can add stations in the future. So what that means is we size the transformers and the panels to accommodate the additional load, as well as run the conduits, so that way all you have to do is purchase the machines as demand increases. The next question is back to kind of the existing tree cover, same comment there, that Building A will step to work with the grade as it slopes southward, meeting the existing grade at the MBTA access road and limiting the amount of fill for the site, and then we're committed to maintaining the forested buffer along the west side of the site to screen the buildings from the neighbors on Progress Street. Question H had to do with what the building materials, as they were not identified. I think the, and this came up on our, on our last hearing, and it was confirmed to Cliff that we're not using any vinyl siding. It'll be primarily cementitious panel and lap siding, but we will definitely not be using any vinyl siding. His next comment had to do with energy efficiency. So as you know, Massachusetts, may have not known, utilizes the International Energy Conservation Code, which is the most stringent in the nation. In addition, this project will be designed to meet Massachusetts stretch code requirements, which has been adapted, adopted by Abington, which is 10% give or take more efficient than that IEC code, which we are identified as, as one of the more stringent in the country. So, you know, the property will feature, you know, tankless hot water heaters, low-flush water sense plumbing fixtures, LED lighting, Energy Star appliances, programmable thermostats, and of course, the EV, EV car charging stations. Comment I had to do with exterior lighting, the latest, and this is from Cliff, "The latest application materials include a site lighting plan, however, apparently with reference only to the proposed new pole-mounted fixtures, as well as the fixtures that are retained along the center drive. This reviewer has no issues with the diagrams that have been provided, although the situation would change if there is also building, mounting, lighting proposed for the project." And our comment back is that "lighting will abide by the dark scar requirements, and that all lighting will either be facing down or covered sconces. There will be a downlit sconce at each unit entry balcony at the building entrance points for resident safety." Comment K had to do with landscape elements, planting materials, and planning design. "We provided Cliff as a follow-up with a detailed planting plans with plant lists, schedules, quantity, size of proposed planting, and planting details will be provided with the final construction sets. We will provide additional plantings in the parking lots where snow storage is not needed." L, again, has to do with energy performance and environmental. I'm not going to read that, it's the same, same response, that we're going to meet stretch code, which is a pretty stringent environmental energy conservation code. The next comment had to do with car sharing. We've done this at a few of our projects, most recently one in Somerville. We've reached out to Zipcar, their response is the same as it is at every stage at this point, is we're interested, call us when it's ready, and we'll see what market conditions are at the time. So we will be sure to do that, to reach out to Zipcar to see if they'd be interested in providing vehicles at this location for, for residents to use, who may not have a vehicle. The next one just talks about kind of the fill and the impact with trucks coming in and out. As a standard with, with most of our projects, we'll have to supply a logistics plan as part of our building permanent submission with the town, so we'll be sure to do that, that outlines that logistics plans with trucks coming in and out of the site. Have conversations been initiated with the MBTA? We have spoken with a company called Grayco, who manages the real estate on behalf of the MBTA, and we have looped them in on what's going on with this project, and their response has been, will let us know if there's anything we can help with. Universal Design features should be integrated into the project plans. Universal Design is a design that is usable by all people to the greatest extent possible without the need for adaptation or specialized design. Per code, we have followed the Massachusetts State Building Code and Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, which requires all public and amenities spaces and common areas within the buildings to be fully accessible, along with the 5% of the apartments to be Group 2 ADA accessible. Next comment is, "Provide information related to site-wide accessibility, including the number of fully accessible units that are proposed. The property will feature the required 5% of all units in Group 2A dwelling units, and 2% of all units will be designed for persons who are deaf or hard of hearing. All floors on each building will be accessible by elevator, and all portions of the site will be accessible across slopes of pathways at 2% max." His next comment is, "Building A appears to only include two elevators in the plans, Building B only has one. This is very low given the unit count. There's no code requirement for the number of elevators. The number of elevators proposed here aligns with what we've done on other similar projects, and has proven to be sufficient. And keep in mind that residents who live on the first floor obviously do not use an Next, Cliff asked us to provide more detail related to the programming of the interior common spaces. The interior amenity package will feature a robust, it'll be a robust amenity package, including large fitness center with yoga, spin room, game room, club lounge, work-from-home spaces, mail and package room, bike storage, and a full leasing office. His next comment, "It is not clear from the plans where the dumpsters and their enclosures are located. Vehicular movement plan should include maneuvering of trash trucks and pickup locations. Building A, which is the building that is on the eastern portion of the site, has an internal trash room with an internal trash compactor for the residents. bins will be rolled out for pickup as frequently as needed, and Building B does have an exterior trash room with compactor in the parking area, and it will be enclosed." "Can the views to the southwest parking area along Summer Street be buffered?" Is the comment from Cliff. "The wetlands and natural resources will provide a good buffer from Summer Street and the southwest parking lot. There are a couple of good trees along Summer Street that will maintain, will be maintained. We will spray the slope with a wild flow mix to soften the slope. Additional shade and evergreen trees have been added along Summer Street, as well as shrub massings to enhance the buffer along the satellite parking lot. Plantings will work around any existing vegetation to remain." "Are the sidewalks within the development proposed to be asphaltic or cement concrete? They will be cement concrete. Transformer location in Building A should be reconsidered, move it out of the courtyard." We agree. We temporarily did move it, and I can identify that on the plans, it's moved to kind of the rear of Building A. Ultimately, that'll be at the discretion of EverSource for where they want the transformer. That won't be, won't be in our hands, but we can certainly work with them to propose a location that works. "Given the proximity of the train tracks to the long elevation of Building A, the applicant should commission acoustical vibration review to determine what upgrades may be required to the building envelope to meet development of housing and urban HUD noise guide, guidebook. We're obviously going to do this, right? I mean, we care about our residents' experience. If it's loud in these units, they're not going to rent these units. So we fully plan on hiring an acoustical engineer during the design phase to see what type of windows and/or enhanced acoustical upgrades we may need on that section of the A comment on, the next one was just noted, general comment. Cliff asks, the peer review consultant asks whether a radon mitigation system will be installed, and it will. He offers up in comment N, talking about the map, the visual and impact of the structure. And we think going to five stories, you know, he makes a comment to, alluding to five stories, and I know there's been a lot of commentary from public and the members that they think four stories is too tall. So I would imagine five stories would be going the opposite direction, and we think five stories is too tall, given what else is in town and the surrounding area, we think five stories would be too tall. And as you can see from the site section, it's not really visible at four stories, five, given the tree cover, at five stories, it will become visible. We did get a chance to meet with the Fire Chief, and I believe he identified it actually in the public hearing, support for the pitch roofs from a waterproofing standpoint, and mentioned that several flat roof projects that have since needed to add additional equipment screens, which have been viewed as ugly and unfavorable by the town, but I'll let Chief Nuttall address that again, if you would like. So we really think the four stories, which is with the pitch roof, is kind of the ideal height, and from a waterproofing and rain standpoint, and aesthetic view, to kind of keep with that traditional New England slope roof style that so many of the houses in town have. And that, that's it. So I'm happy to kind of go through any of those answers again, and Cliff, I don't know if you're able to still hear me, or if you have any follow-up comments?
Yeah, Cliff, do you have any follow-up?
I did hear. Can you hear me?
Yeah, kind of.
Wonderful. First, I apologize for not providing you with advance notification that I wasn't in the state today, and, but I have heard the responses clearly, and I reviewed them, you know, I had access to all of the responses. I just have a couple of comments I'd like to make, I think, just to remind listeners, and I know the board knows this, but my role really is, I think, to try to move towards the best possible project for the site, understanding the limitations that the board may have under the statute, but I've seen good evidence, I think, in the responses from this developer that they're listening, and they clearly do have a lot of experience. There are a couple of points I still would like to push a little bit harder. I think you know that my goal is to try to really locate what I think could be the least impactful project, and this, this development falls into a category of projects that there's, it's unquestionably out of scale with the surrounding houses, whether it has a slope roof, or who knows what. It's way out of scale with the other residential buildings. And that in and of itself, to me, is not, not a huge issue if there are other strategies undertaken that help mitigate the scale, or in this case, screening. I think it's pretty clear through the additional documentation, in particular, the site section, the strategy in this development is really screening it. So I think we should look at it from that perspective, what really is the best way to screen it if we think that the scale is an issue. So I just want to set that as background, and then push back on a couple of things, and recognize other things that I think are, were well, well responded to from, from my perspective. Maybe I'll start with the biggest issue, which, and then I'll go through a small catalog of things that I think, I'd like to make a, distinguish it, what items that I think are easily coverable by the board by conditions. If there is going to be a decision with decision, or with conditions attached, which is pretty typical, there are a number of things that really are easily stated as conditions. For example, the acoustical study is important. I would urge the board that they attach, and I can certainly provide the language, a specific language about what kind of standards you would expect to be met in the building. And that, to me, is a perfect example of a condition. It doesn't have any impact on the way the building looks from the public realm. It does impact the way the residents are there, but if they go through the exercise of that, it's a good assurance that the residents will not be adversely impacted from the noise of the train. On the other hand, there are other items that I think really do need to be submitted as revised, as revised drawings. Good example of that, I think, is the landscape plan. There is a landscape plan, but I think we're missing some important items on it, particularly if we're looking to successful screening of the development from the neighbors. The site section is really useful in understanding the scale of the buildings and the distance from the property line, but we don't really know the nature of those, the screening materials. We know their height from that section, and assuming, I take it at face value, that the height is accurately shown, but we don't really know the makeup of those trees, and there's an infiltration system being installed near them, and there is not shown on the landscape plan, the delineation of the landscape that's meant to be left in place. But I think understanding better what that screen actually is, and what kind of tree protection is proposed, is pretty important, and I think a more detailed landscaping plan, whether that swath of trees needs to be strengthened with a more opaque understory, or whatever it might take, to really ensure that that screening is there, you know, as is implied in that, in that site section. I think similarly, the screening on Summer Street, there is a reference to there being some trees that can be maintained, some notable trees that can be maintained, but I don't think we really have a good sense on that side of the site, what the screening will actually end up, end up being. So that's, that's one issue. I think if we buy on to the theory that the best treatment for this development is proper screening, then I think we should ask for additional documentation of that screening. The second issue that, to me, which is back to what I said about finding the least impactful part of the site, I do think it is, continues to be worth studying, and I'll put this in front of the board, because it is, it would imply going to a require, perhaps, if this unit count really needs to be hit, it would require a fifth story on the building. And I think I do maintain that it is worth looking at that option for two important reasons. One is that it puts the massing as far away from impacted neighbors as is possible. If you combine the building into one larger footprint, much further away from the neighbors, I think it's easy to imagine that the screening would be quite easy, certainly from the west. We don't know much about the screening on the south side toward... don't know much about the screening on the south side toward Summer Street, but I think that we need to see in any case. So that's one reason. It's just moving it further away is a pretty tried and true mitigation strategy. Secondly, is that it does open up space on the site. It can potentially open up space on the site. And I think that is important, and I appreciate the perspectives, the perspective drawings that were submitted. And I think those drawings, to my mind, do make a case that it could be beneficial for the development and for the residents if you could pull some of those amenities outside of the courtyard of the building and provide a different type of open space for more active use of the residents, and essentially getting rid of that kind of corridor that exists between Building A and Building B along the entry drive. I think the, I understand, and I think many people would concur with the developer of preference for sloped roofs versus flat roofs. In my opinion, if the strategy is really to screen the building in any case, I don't see how, you kind of can't have it both ways, where you're relating to existing architecture, and then at the same time trying to screen it from existing architecture. And I also think, you know, just from a design perspective, it's pretty hard to make a case that a four-story building with a sloped roof is really similar in any way that most people relate to, to, you know, one and a half and two-story buildings with sloped roofs on them. So I think I would put that out there. This project is at a pretty schematic level, and I think the idea of looking at really concentrating the density of the site in the least impactful area, and opening up opportunities for more usable outdoor space, to me, is worth it from a study level before drawings really get advanced. And these are not advanced drawings. They are very schematic drawings. But before you really dig in and start to make it a real project, I think it's worth looking at. The applicant can make a legitimate case that it would result in some loss of apartments. No question about that. There would be some loss. I think that the building, Building A, could be extended somewhat in length to minimize that loss. So I don't think it, from my perspective, having done a lot of multifamily buildings, I think the kinds of cost savings that you might see from really concentrating the building into one structure with lots and lots of shared systems would be significant, and again, giving that additional benefit of usable outdoor space for the residents. So I put that out there as something that I think could be an interesting scheme to look at. I think the board has to decide, well, again, I think if it's sufficiently screened, I think that the notion of whether it's flat-roofed or sloped, if not moot, is at least not hugely significant. I appreciate the fire chief's concern about waterproofing, but actually, the proposal is building sloped roofs that have wells in the sloped roofs to screen the mechanical equipment. And in my experience, in the New England climate creating wells is a much more significant waterproofing issue than a very standard and commercial level of sloped roof or flat roof. I'll make a couple of other quick comments. And again, I want to emphasize that many, many of the responses that you heard tonight, I think are really spot on and bode well. But I did want to point out a couple other things. The concern about grills, for example, I get a little hyper-detailed here, but my concern about the grills really wasn't a fire safety issue. It was more about just cooking fumes. And I think for those of you who grill a lot, you understand that maybe grilling really close to a number of people's windows is not the greatest. I appreciate the point, and actually, I did miss the Island Grove Park that is within four tenths of a mile, as the applicant stated. I don't know about the programming of that park. It looks like quite a nice space, but I didn't walk in the park. I don't know if the kind of programming that I would be suggesting for open space on this site is comparable. But I'll just put that out there. They are correct. There is a very nice park nearby, but it may not serve the same kinds of needs. In that category of what I think should be drawings that are submitted, as opposed to conditions, it's very unusual to not get building elevations that really specifically point out which areas are fiber-smed versus other materials in the building. I would urge the board to request the, you know, real annotated building elevation, so we know exactly where the materials are that they're committing to. The bike room is a great acknowledgement that they are doing the bike room. We don't know where it is. That's probably within the kind of condition level of providing a certain number of bike parking spaces. The EV, I will say, this developer is way ahead of a lot of other developers in looking ahead to the inevitability of electric vehicles. It's a really good thing. Other things I picked up, DARPS guard requirements is an obvious condition to put on any decision. I made the comment already about understanding better what, any landscaping that would be left in place, just so we can confirm that it really could serve as a screening element. I appreciate the reaching out to Zipcar. That really can help keep open space on the site, if nothing else. One small detail that the board may be interested in, that a development of this type not only has group, or fully accessible unit requirements, given that it's an elevator-fed multifamily building, all of the units are required to be Group 1 units, which is a good thing. They're commonly known as sort of adaptable units. So that's a really good thing that they've acknowledged. I spoke about the acoustical engineer. And I think that's about it for my comments. I appreciate getting the responses back in time for me to review them. I do think there may be another approach to this site that is worth looking at that could actually end up helping from a stormwater perspective, as well as programmable outdoor space. And I'll leave it at that. And if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, I'm going to ask, anybody on the board have any questions for Cliff?
No, I haven't.
I have a couple, Cliff. You had mentioned the shadow plan. Is that a plan that you would recommend we get as well?
Sean, maybe you can repeat that. I didn't quite hear that.
Chairman asked if you still recommend the shadow plan be provided?
Well, it depends. The shadows in this, in the current scenario, there'll be impact on the driveway between the buildings. That's pretty clear. And it'd be a decent amount of the day. I think if amenities could be moved outside of the, in such close proximity to the footprint of the building, the shadow study's a lot less important. I don't think there's a huge chance of there being shadows cast on the neighbors, certainly not if the screening is as indicated, and if it's four-season screening.
Okay. And the other question I had, Cliff, was on the elevators. You would suggest that these, the amount of elevators might be low for this project?
Yeah. This is just my own experience. Speaking, I have a lot of respect for the developer knowing what their product is. It's fewer elevators than the developments I've worked on, which actually are largely affordable housing developments. It's fewer elevators than what our funding sources would expect, which is, I think, my perspective. The, you know, the number of elevators is really about resident convenience and waiting time at the elevators. So I would defer to the applicant's own experience, but my own recommendation is that having multiple elevators in the building is certainly extremely useful in any periods when elevators are down for servicing. I think probably the building department would agree with that. They are completely correct. It isn't mandated in the elevator code. It's more of a practice issue.
That's all I have.
I do have a couple of questions. On the site section, when you're talking about the plants, the trees, so you're talking about the seasonal trees, so elm trees and stuff like that, where they give away the leaves in the wintertime. Is that what you're talking about? I mean, we can look at a site, we can look at a site with the leaves and, yeah, it's blocking everything, but then come wintertime, the leaves are gone, and now you can see the building. Is that what you're talking about?
That is precisely what I'm talking about, as well as knowing that there is a sense of site work in close proximity to some of the trees that are proposed to be left in place. So understanding what's there, whether it's deciduous or evergreen, whether it needs to be supplemented with the understory, or evergreen understory, or whatever it might be, that we can't really see that on the landscape plan. And for me, that's a, that's a good example of something that is better served by an upgraded drawing versus a condition on a decision. But yes, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
And Richard, just if I could add, so like, speaking to, what they've done is they've shown the limit of grading, and then they've drawn a line that says, well, all the other plantings are going to stay. But in all likelihood, that limit of grading is going to impact trees that extend into the area that they're leaving as landscape buffer. So to that point, just because they draw it as green doesn't mean it's going to stay green. And also, there's, depending on the trees, we don't know what's happening at the lower levels. So you could have a tree that's 30 feet tall, right, but the bottom nine feet is bare. And in that case, it doesn't do any screening at all. So that's the kind of point of having a more detailed plan.
When we talk about Target and Stop &amp; Shop, I mean, are we talking about the same piece of property? I mean, they use that example as for parking or space, building space. I seem to remember Target has a very large parking lot and access.
It's also different because it's in a different zone. It allows commercial development.
I just noticed that they're using that as...
This is a residential district.
As an example of...
No, yeah, I wouldn't compare. I don't think you can compare the two. They're apples and oranges.
I just wanted to bring up, I think they're bringing them up, so I just want to...
Yeah. The board's peer reviewer brought up the building, what they're comparing, and they compare it to ours.
Okay, because this is a totally different property, a totally different mount. Again, we have, we have a, we have a small piece of land with a large building on it, two buildings, if you will.
If I could clarify, because I appreciate the applicant pointing out that my arithmetic was way off on the square footage of that building. So they were spot on with that. The exercise that I engaged in, I think, was more aimed at making the point that this is an exceptional residential building, not that there were other commercial buildings of similar footprint. I think that where the line of logic goes is that the developer acknowledges that it is much larger than nearby residential fabric, and therefore adopted the screening strategy, which I think is legitimate. I don't, I have no concerns at all with that kind of strategy, particularly given where the site is. It's an extremely transit-friendly site, at least from the tease perspective. It is, that's a good thing. It's supported by the state and lots of other people. So that's a good thing. I think where I'm poking away is, if that's a strategy that you're adopting, I think it could be pushed further to benefit both the residents and, I think, perhaps even be more effectively screened from, in this case, particularly from the neighbors.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else on the board? Sean?
Yeah, just one quick question. I mentioned during your presentation that the leasing office is included in the amenity space. Is that...
Correct. And that is where we have the visitor parking per perspective tenants. I will note that there's no programming inside the building that's happening. That'll happen after. We're just designing the building.
All right.
So I know what's going to be in it. The locations comes after.
I just ask that, given that we have a lot of expressed concerns about open space and similar, like, I would consider amenity space is similar to open space in a way. But I wouldn't conflate leasing space with amenity space, that I would consider leasing space is not something that's generally usable by the residents. So I guess, maybe in the future, if you're going to think of amenity space, you would just leave a leasing space or the business won't run it.
Sure. Say the 7,000 square feet of amenity.
So how much of the box that you say is...
We haven't designed it. I mean, property of this size will have three people in office, so 500 square feet.
That's what you're looking for, is what, the size of that?
Yeah, it surprised me to hear leasing space brought up in the amenity space. So I just wanted to make sure that, if it's 500 of 7,000, that's the minimus, right? But if it's 3,500 of 7,000, that's kind of...
I think we're identifying it as public space. That's not residential.
And just Mark, what about, what about the open space? I mean, you talk about 14,000 square feet of open space.
Yeah, we think it's more than enough.
Well, let me finish. That was just my...
I'm sorry, Chairman.
And, but I think Cliff is more concerned with programmable open space. Hers is just open space.
Sure. Yep.
What's your response to that?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of programming, you know, we have the pool, which is pretty standard for these Class A communities. Tenants expect that. You know, we'll have, if you look at the rendering on page five, you can kind of see, and this hasn't been fully programmed, right? We'll hire an interior designer to help, they're called an interior designer, but they help us with our courtyard layouts in collaboration with the landscape architect. But we'll have our pool area, you know, there'll be a fire pit and lounge area to hang out. The grills will be set away from the windows. We're not going to have grills right up against tenants' windows for multiple reasons. So you can kind of get a sense for what this courtyard will be. This will be, you know, just as active as the other courtyard, but there's a lot of hanging and lounging space in addition to the pool. And then the courtyard in the other space will have your cornhole, you know, your lawn games, you know, cataract chairs, you know, whatever, whatever the programming calls for.
And it's a nice-looking space, but I think my concern as well, Cliff's thought was, it's 151 bedrooms outside of primary bedrooms. So obviously, some of those bedrooms are going to be occupied by children. This kind of open space isn't necessarily geared towards children. A pool is only open three or four months out of the year.
Sure.
And so what happens to the kids?
Yeah, I would just say, Chairman, you know, no one's forced to rent here, right? And if they don't think that there's enough money space for their children to run around, they probably won't rent here. They'll probably look for another community that maybe appeals to them more, right? So, you know, we're going off the experience from the 3,000 units, and I can divide the statistics, but we're one of the, we've built over the last 10 years, we're probably top five in amount of suburban units delivered. We like to think we know what we're doing, whether we do or we don't. We seem to get... We seem to get great feedback from our residents on, you know, the quality of the product that we deliver, both from a unit standpoint and the amenity for their enjoyability. So we really feel like this is an appropriate amount. It's significantly more than three other properties that I just listed that are, you know, we're going to draw from the same tenant pool, that transit-oriented, I can hop on the train, be in Boston, the same employment drivers, a social hospital, the Dana Farber there, this, you know, this kind of Plymouth County employment base, so very similar type renter. And they, they seem to be doing okay with a lot less.
So are they more, the folks that you rent to at this point in time, some of these other projects, are they more single people, or are they married couples without children?
We typically don't, you know, and it's, it's fair housing, we really can't provide that with what the children age is, but, you know, there's, there's some at the projects, but I think we've always found that there's not as many. You tend to see probably more schoolchildren in the communities that are in top school districts. Not that Abington isn't, but, you know, just referencing kind of the top 10 school districts, right? Those tend to probably have more children.
Did you consider under the building parking, like garage?
No, it would not be financially feasible.
Where's it going to be, where's the office going to be? I also have an office there somewhere.
Yeah, we have it at the middle corridor of the E, right where we have kind of the guest parking, so that'll be where prospective tenants will come and re-put the leasing and property management, or to come pick up their packages, mail, and whatnot.
If I could...
And, well, one other... Yeah, go ahead, Cliff.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't see that I'm interrupting you. I apologize for that. I think the, maybe this is a corollary to what I was saying, of looking at the option of eliminating smaller building or relocating that massing. I think if that's not the direction, that's not the end of the discussion about mitigation, I do think that if the decision is made that the smaller building stays where it is, then I do think it puts a very bright light on demonstrating that, that one of the fundamentals about this project, which is successful screening, that that really works, and that everybody on the board is satisfied that it does. I will say that other strategies that you see, where you do have multiple buildings, one that's closer to smaller scale buildings, is that that building would be of a smaller scale than the others, maybe down even to a scale where the sloped roof would actually bear some relation to the neighboring buildings, where they might relate to that sloped roof as, as a way to tie the development in to those, whatever it is, six or seven much smaller scale buildings to the west. So I think I didn't state that in my letter, but I think I'll state it now, that if that's the direction, then I think there are other ways that the applicant could really look at making a convincing argument for mitigating the scale of the building that is the closest to the neighbors, combined with showing us a, maybe more convincingly, a section in the other direction out to Summer Street, so we understand better what's going on in that preserved green space right along the road.
And then, in light, in light with that, or in line with that, the plan shows, and we had a letter previously, a couple of meetings ago, about that right-of-way that runs along...
The easement, the Center Avenue Trust.
Yeah. How are we protected with that as far as buffering and that sort of thing? If there's an easement there, and somebody who owns the easement or has access to the easement wants to come in and take the trees down, here's the easement.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to, I can't, off the top of my head speed here, I can follow up with some information on that.
Because it's been represented that there's natural vegetate, that there's natural, unnatural screening, vegetated screening, but there's not, because that easement can be, is not owned by you.
Do you want to answer? The property is owned, will be owned by the developer. There is a right to pass over that to get out to the street, but not necessarily a right to come in and clear out that whole area. And there's a path that somebody could come in and connect to the parking lot and go out if they wanted to do it. They've never done it today, there's a road there today. You're right, the easement exists and may not have a right to terminate the easement, but it's not a right to come in and clear out that whole area. It's a right to cut across it to get to the path out to Summer Street.
I think there's only 20 to 30 feet of landscape area left in place, so assuming the rest of it is occupied by some other infrastructure. If someone does cut a four, even a four-foot walkway through it, you're going to, you're going to reduce the planting that's there.
We're not touching the road, it's a 50-foot.
No, I think the board's point is that some person in the union...
I'm sorry.
And that's right, we can't, we can't control that, so we're not proposing it, and we don't have a right to terminate the easement.
And do you have a plan that shows the easement?
The one that we have?
Yeah, do you have a, do you have a plan for me?
She moved that green.
Right.
It says it's a 50-foot wide easement.
Which, which area are you pointing at?
Right. It's a, it's a 50-foot wide easement, it's not necessarily a four-foot wide easement.
I didn't say four-foot.
No, no, I know, I'm just saying.
That was your consultant, I just said that the easement area is...
It's all 50-foot. It's 50 feet wide, it's all extended.
So the entire landscape park that remains between the houses on Progress Street and the development is within that?
It's within that 50-foot easement.
A significant portion of that easement is encumbered with the parking lot and the grading of the parking lot. So really, the area that's shown as landscape is just what's left over that's not being used by the project.
So, so someone could come from here and cut a path all the way to Summer Street?
Correct.
Maybe they want to go a path through the right.
Well, you're filling in that wetland, aren't you?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Oh, you have determined this one's now bordering?
No, that always was bordering.
Where was the isolated wetland?
On the other side.
Oh, this one? Okay. But still, they could come in. I mean, they could get a permit from, they could get an order of conditions to do that. So, so that is, that is a concern. Yeah, as an easement holder, they can apply for an NOI. So that is a concern, that they could come in and, and, I mean, how wide, how wide is a car? They need to be able, if it's a, if they, I haven't seen the easement, if they have the right to, if it's a right of access, I don't know why they couldn't, I don't know why they couldn't come in and clear out the 50-foot.
There's also, it's a property here that's...
And just keep in mind, too, there's nothing that says they have to use the easement in the entirety. They could get access through a house on Progress.
Understood, but I guess I'm, I'm saying the opposite, they could use the, they can use it in the entirety.
But I'm saying, even if they couldn't get across the wetland, they could come into the easement, walk up Progress Street, and use the part that's buffering.
And this is all, I don't know, park the somewhere else.
So that looks empty too. I don't know, but I think it's concerning. I don't think we can rely on that area for screening. I really don't. I don't know how we could. I don't know how, I don't know how we, I don't know how we could, because the applicant does not have control, full control over that.
You haven't seen the actual document?
No, I'm, I can, it only references the book and the plan book.
You're welcome to see the document, it's a public document.
Yeah, I know, I was just asking Amy if she had seen it.
I'm sure the answer is the easement exists.
Yep.
And third, it's not our, we wouldn't come in and do that. We can't react to that any more than we can react to a future project and have, we don't know what happened there. And it, you know, it exists, we're leaving the trees, so I hear what you're saying, and you're obviously looking to raise to talk about it. And we're not denying that the easement exists and somebody could do that, but it is true today. We are planning to leave that tree. And if somebody really wants the access from there to Summer Street, there are plenty of easy ways to do it, including all of that, going to the wetland to put it in a line, and they just cut across and into the parking lot. There's this work due today, cut across and into the parking lot and street, and let's give it out to Summer Street. So that, I'm not saying that couldn't happen, but we also don't control it, and there's nothing that's been proposed, and, you know, if that was what we could do.
So we can't consider that as screening?
No.
No, you can't.
But...
Not, and not, I don't think, I don't think that you could, I don't think that in good conscience you could, you can consider that screening, because somebody could come in and take down those trees. So I, I think that's...
So maybe we go back to what Cliff had suggested and look at one building on the other side. Right?
Cliff and I don't always agree this is something we agree on, in that...
What is that?
That consolidating the building has a lot of benefits, and it seems like they all trend in the right direction. We usually, Cliff and I usually get in trouble when we propose higher heights, but we do that because it creates other things that we think return better value. I think this is a perfect example. The added height at the Building A location is almost imperceptible to anybody, whereas...
Why is that? Because it sits lower?
Well, because it's another, almost 200 feet away from the nearest person. Like, if there were people on the other side of the railroad track, perhaps, right? In this case, it's like, that side of the project is sort of no man's land, because that's where the railroad is. And then you add in, too, remember, this, this parking lot is raised above grade eight, 10 feet, so it's going to stand above the backyards of the lot, so it's going to, it's going to be even more, I think, perceptible than you might otherwise consider, because it's going to, it's going to sit, it's going to sit above.
54.
So the lighting's going to sit above, you know, everything's going to be at a higher perspective.
Any more questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this is a, I guess it's a statement or anything else. My only problem with raising, raising the height of Building A is I need, I need the chief...
Well, we're going to open it up to the floor.
You know, I need the chief's comments on that.
I'm sure the chief is going to have a comment.
Sure, because I'm, having been around this a little, a little while now, that would be one of my first concerns, is to make sure that, that part of it is, is really well understood and approved by that process. That's my only comment.
My only comment is that I don't think everyone knows what we're talking about. It should be on the screen over here that we can show them what we're talking about. You know, the public should be able to see what we're talking about, because, do you have a...
Candidly, we thought we would be in the other room.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of important that...
We show that.
Yeah. One way or the other, I just, the public should be able to see what we're talking about, so.
All right, I'm going to open it up, you know, my mark's stepping back, and I'm going to open it up to the floor to see if there's any questions from you.
Yeah, you know, I do apologize, we didn't think we were in here. Candidly, we should have had one. This, the renderings and everything we had in front of you...
Yeah, I was just worried with the public, and this is on TV.
Was submitted to the ZBA, sure, it could have been accessed by the public. So, you know, I appreciate Cliff's continued, continued comments, you know, I appreciate that he, you know, shows concern for the resident experience. We do too. So I echo that statement, that we want to make a project that works for the residents. You know, I think, Cliff, if you can touch a little more, I think you talk about kind of the screening, and at some points, it sounds like you feel like it's screened, but then you allude that maybe there's additional screening. You know, we had provided comments back to the peer reviewer in excess of two weeks before tonight's hearing. It would have been very easy for us to provide a lot of those answers if it had been requested, you know, to look at, you know, what type of trees were here. We did go out and tag them for the heights, and we could have clearly identified what the existing vegetation is. So I could have had answers for you tonight, and unfortunately, we don't. So your team did well. I think the class, the team has... So we're happy to, you know, follow up with a sheet that identifies the proposed materials as Cliff alluded to. I identify...
The goal is to demonstrate that it's, it's going to accomplish what you're representing it's going to accomplish. It's not to just come back with a bunch of information. It's to say, okay, we're relying on this stretch of wood to mitigate the visual impact of this building on these butts. That's the exercise, right? And right now, you have no detail on that entire face. So what Cliff is asking for, and Cliff, tell me if I'm wrong, I just get a bit frustrated when people ask to be told what to do. In this case, you need to demonstrate that this stretch of landscaping is going to visually mitigate this building from these people. Whatever you need to do to do that, you know, that's the goal.
That's well stated, Sean. You're right, we don't always agree, but on this one, I think, I think we do, I think, because I think we all agree on the overall, the overarching strategy, which is a screening strategy. So that, that has to work from all the important directions, and in this case, there's clearly one direction that's extremely important, and I don't think we see that it does work from that direction.
And I frankly don't think it's going to work because of the issues with the easement.
And so, "The easement is used for, to be used for all purposes for which streets and ways are used in the town of Abington, including a subsurface easement for utilities, water, drainage, and sewerage, which 50-foot passageway shall be extended to and merged with the existing traveled way."
So they could run a water line in that easement?
Yeah, yeah.
So effectively, there is no planting that's reliable between the project and the houses on that.
That's reliable?
Correct.
The stuff there could be potentially taken down.
Yeah.
Correct.
Who's easement, the town?
No, Center Avenue Realty Trust.
Okay. So I'm going to ask you to step back, Mark, so we can see if there's anybody else in the...
Thank you, Chair.
Public who wants to speak.
If I could make one more comment, that, you know, again, I think, you know, that what came to mind for me, and I think Sean from a different perspective thought was worth pursuing, that is adding more height to the larger building, which even adding that floor would in fact be lower than the ridge height of the building that is proposed. But again, there are other, other solutions, that if you imagine no trees at all along that western border, there could be a building type that would be more suitable, that, you know, that would create the kind of tie-in and mitigation strategy that could work. So maybe it's a little bit of what Sean was saying, I don't feel like it's my role to be prescriptive, but for me, it's, it's kind of incumbent on me to point out something that seems like an obvious way to do it, but it certainly is not the only way to do it. And to Sean's point, if it really is a screening strategy that I think can work very well, then it just needs more information.
Okay, thanks. Chief?
A lot of information tonight to digest, and I'm still, I was actually prepared for just an apparatus turning thing, so this has taken a complete 180.
Right.
And I didn't take notes, I'm going to try to do this from memory, there's a lot of stuff here.
We still have the apparatus turning issues, that's...
Well, we may have actually solved that, but that may be a moot point at this point. This seems to have come full circle from almost four years ago, or maybe it's been four years ago, when this entire project began under a different owner, which, it was the same thing, we're trying to compress a massive project on a little tiny lot, and the only thing that absolutely will not be discussed to alleviate any of this is a loss of profit for whoever owns it. It appears to me that this is the same thing. I am going to stick to the fire department, but we are all involved in this, and I think that's the crux of what we're looking at again tonight, now possibly adding an entire new story to this building. I also don't know if the applicant's school system was insulted tonight, or that's just my take on it, I'm not quite sure. So, I want to make sure I'm clear on this. Are we, and Cliff, please correct me if I'm wrong, are we now looking at... Are we now looking at combining the two buildings into one single five-story building to free up more space around it? Is that what we're looking at?
Well, that was a, thank you for exactly what you phrase that. It's a, to me, it's, it solves some issues about proximity of the amenities to the units, the way that they're currently tucked in, I think could be relieved and be functionally preferable if it were put into those courtyards. But as importantly, it opens up much more open space that the developer actually has control over that could ensure sufficient screening. And I think the section speaks for itself, you know, the building is further away. So you need lower screening in order to achieve the same visual effect. So, yeah, I mean, that, that is what I suggested. There's something to look at. It's not the only solution. But that was my suggestion in my review letter.
Okay, so we're looking at once, one building now five stories. Two sides on this. One, we're looking to try to shade the building or shield or hide the building, whatever, by going taller. I, I don't quite think that works. However, can we deal with a five-story building over a four-story building? Yes, the short answer is yes. The aerial truck will hit the aerial, the area municipal departments around us for mutual aid. Their aerials will hit this as well. Holbrook doesn't count, but they've got an engine. Having once, one building instead of two actually simplifies operations for the fire department because we're only going to one building instead of two. You know, there's different reasons for that. If this project was down to one single building, even with a greater height, but it would alleviate or solve a lot of these other problems that we've been dealing with really for the last four years, I, I'd obviously have to look at the new plans. This is a brand new design again. We'd be looking at all new turning radiuses and like that. I'm assuming that will be much simpler because I think it's more in line, probably closer to what the Gables development are up off of North Quincy Street. They're not four stories, although they do have a very high peaked roof. I actually, through experience with the fire department, the reason we like peaked roof is because they don't leak as much as a flat roof. And it doesn't matter if it's a wood flat roof, a concrete flat roof, a lightweight steel flat roof, because we've got all of those in town. And I've personally been to many of those where they do leak. And we've actually had a four-story concrete building completely shut down for a considerable amount of time with all of the occupants in there because it leaked. We have another former flat roof wood building that they, when it was originally built in their late 60s, early 70s, that because it leaked so much, they added a rain roof, which is now they've added a pitch roof on top of the flat roof, which is a nightmare for firefighting standpoint. That's the main reason I don't like flat roofs. I'm not an architect, I'm just a fire chief. But known experience that we've had, I'm just trying to avoid that for future firefighters or residents in this town. That's the reason I'm, I'm not trying to hide the building, I'm trying to protect the building. That's the reason for the, the peaked roof, in my opinion. I'm not an architect. So the Gables development, they're three-story buildings, but they have a very high peaked roof. You know, we're kind of used to that. I don't think a five-story building with some type of peaked or mansard roof, it, it's not going to be, it would not handicap, it would not be detrimental to my department. I, I think we could handle that. We're looking at them right next door in Weymouth. Obviously, Brockton has much higher ones. It's doable. However, that being said, and I'm not one of the abutters here, if you're here, that certainly is out of scale with the neighborhood, even including the woodlands across the street. This would be much larger than that. That's a decision you're going to have to make, not me. I'm just trying to, to Mr. Manning, give you the, the answer that you're all looking for. Can we deal with a five-story building? I think if it was done properly and safely, and it might give more amenities to the residents who may live here regardless of their age, it's probably a fair trade-off.
Thank you, Chief.
Quickly on that, I would agree with Cliff on make sure we have enough elevators. I have no idea what the formula is, more than one. And the reason for that, again, is based on experience. We have another four-story building in town, apartment building where there's only one elevator per building. And when that elevator goes down, which is a lot, that entire building is shut down. And we end up physically carrying people up and down those stairs. That, that's not healthy for anybody. I'd like to have at least two elevators in each building. And if there's a formula beyond that for the size of it, you know, I will defer to that. But I, I would also agree, we should have more than just one elevator in any new building over three stories in height like that. I believe that's most, most of the items that we're discussing tonight, but.
You can always come back up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Wayne Smith, 120 Summit Road, Abington. I wrote this a little while ago, and so some of the things might have been answered tonight, but I perhaps better reading it. On May 24th, 2020, I looked at the revised plans of April 12th, 2022 at the Abington Town Hall. I missed the last meeting on May 24th due to miscommunications. I did watch the proceeds, proceedings on cable TV a few days later. The developer's representative stated that 20 feet of trees would be undisturbed on the Progress Street side. Later, it was stated by the developer that the entire section of 50 feet would remain undisturbed. Also, the dumpsters would be buffered by the trees. The peer reviewer said that the Progress Street residents would be the most impacted and that the development is far greater in scale than anything in the area. In my opinion, the area is isolated. Putting a 40B project in this location with families and children and only the building footprint and asphalt parking is no place to raise a family. Using 40B to get families where they can live affordably is not the purpose of a 40B. They need a place to go outside. Present wetlands are replaced next to wetlands. And aside from the right-of-way easement, there is no open land except for a small dog park the size of some four or five parking spaces. Center Avenue Realty Trust was asked how much it would cost to purchase the easement. A figure was given. The owner of the property said he would have to talk with Wood Partners, the developer. The amount was agreed upon by both. The papers would be drawn up by them. On December 30th, seven days later, an email was sent, quote, "Abington Crossing makes a one-time offer," end of quote, that basically was one-half of the agreed-upon price within a week. And in quotes, "Please let us know by this Friday PM," end of quote. In essence, if we do not hear from you, we will seek legal means. I am sure that this is the kind of people that I cannot trust with their word. The developers are paying millions for this property. They are eliminating almost every square foot of open land except for the 50-foot easement that they say will remain as it is permanently presently. We do not tell you that Center Avenue Realty Trust has a right. They do not tell you that Center Avenue Realty Trust has a right to remove the trees, to put a road to Summer Street. They say the trees will remain undisturbed. Center Avenue has no intentions today to build a road. But if Center Avenue sells any of this land, it may affect the price from, from a buyer. Despite the fact that we have given a figure that I am sure is far less than it should be sold, the only reason we offered it for sale was that it would be unfair for the residents of Progress Street to later see trees, their buffer zone, removed and a road there. The offer that was made to free up this land for them was insignificant compared to what they are paying for the build-up of land. For Center Avenue to writ, to sit idly by and not tell the town, zoning board and neighbors would be inexcusable. The same is true for the developer. I could go on with many more concerns, such as taking my life in my hands presently, walking between our property over the right-of-way to the T station, which by the way, is our right-of-way. Speed bumps perhaps are needed. The grading on the plans and the undisturbed easement that shows on the plans that isn't being disturbed. The Franklin property that the developer referred to at the hearing, to name a few. The developer said, and he said again tonight similar, "We are deeply concerned about the residents." To that, I would say, really.
Anybody, anybody else have any comments from the public? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Yes. Name and address, please.
Thank you. John Norton, 84 Progress Street. And I'd like to say thank you for everybody for the concerns about the neighbors, for what I've heard. But before I begin that, as far as the conservation committee, I know they hired someone. Has that study been done? And do we have access to the results of that?
Sean?
Yeah, so Phil did provide a copy of the peer review consultant for the ConCom's review. They pretty much confirmed the wetland delineation. So that addresses my concerns that I expressed that, the potential for change if the conservation commission doesn't agree with the delineation. So I think to your question, the, the ConCom did hire somebody that we know and we know is, is qualified and good. So we have no reason to believe that they didn't do a good job. Everything that they said seemed to make sense. So I think we can move forward with confidence that the wetland delineation is accurate as shown on this plan.
So I think.
We have one guy up here at the, so one at a time, so.
So they, they do a study, they submit to the ConCom. The ConCom is the ultimate approver of delineation. The conservation commission hired another professional to review their work. That professional issued a letter that I reviewed and it confirms their delineation so that you, it basically approves or agrees with their, their determination of where the wetland.
So there was someone physically on that property and that did a study?
Yes.
Okay, that's it. I didn't, and is that available for the public?
I believe it is.
Yes, it's a.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Conservation Commission, I, I would imagine would have that.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know if they completed that or not before I started. But like I said, I'd like to thank everybody for concerns on the, since I live on Progress Street, I do have pictures here on my phone, and I'd be more happy to share with them and everybody else. As far as what you say, tree line landscaping, as far as if anybody wants to come to our backyard, welcome. You can see from my backyard across the street, the lights. So I don't know how you're going to hide a bill, landscaping, whatnot. So I agree with possibly one building, but I actually would rather have none at a lower level. And I just don't think that, you know, I know if this wasn't a 40B, this probably wouldn't go. It would be safe. So I just want to let you know that if anybody would like pictures of showing what it looks like from my backyard on Progress Street going out, I'd be more than happy to show.
Do you want to send them to Cassie and we can?
Sure.
Look out at the next, the next meeting, that'd be great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Frank?
Frank Cronin, 458 Summer Street. I'd just like to clarify the public comments about the conservation. Did you, I was wondering if Sean had watched the meeting or you simply read the report?
I just, I just read the consultant's report.
Okay, so there was a meeting. I wasn't able to go, but it was broadcast and I took notes on it just to see. And basically, the report that you're talking about was not sent to the conservation board until Friday afternoon at 4 o'clock after town hall had closed. That information didn't get disseminated to the board in time for them to have read the report and be able to have a discussion about it. There were some differences in terms of the peer reviewer and what they thought of the report. They said that there were, they wanted to change the designation of one area to a pond according to wetlands designation. They also wanted to add that there was an intermittent stream. And they also wanted to change to isolated vegetative wetlands. I don't completely understand all of this, nor did the board. And so they said they wanted to have a discussion and ask questions about what that meant. The person from the, from the developer for this project, who is the wetland specialist who presented herself, has accepted that information. But that doesn't mean it's told the whole story. So I'm just saying that the conservation board hasn't really done anything. They don't have all the information yet, so.
Just so I can just, my only concern in raising the question is that there is a, as long as that wetland delineation isn't approved, there's a substantial chance that it could require changes to the plan that you're reviewing. So what I wanted to do was to make sure that it was a reasonable determination of what's out there so that you can move with confidence to looking at this plan. So in my opinion, based on what the consultant for the ConCom has written, I, I think it's definitely appropriate to be advancing discussion about this plan because I would expect the wetland delineation to be reasonably consistent with what you see. But to your point, you're not, your role is not to approve it or to manage the detail. I just want to make sure that you're not unnecessarily spending time reviewing a plan that's not achievable because the conservation commission determines that the wetland boundary changed by 50%.
But my understanding is once they approve the delineation, then there's a notice of intent. And then they have to decide, does this plan fit with what the wetlands delineation shows? And is it an appropriate use of the property?
You are correct. Then there's very stringent performance standards that they have to comply with and in a much higher level of detail that needs to be provided.
Okay, so on July 12th, they have another meeting to discuss this. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Anybody else? Yes.
Hi, PM Ha, 149 Walnut Street. I just, I don't know if this has been asked before, but I'm wondering like what the rentals are like for those units? Like, do you have an idea? Like what are, what are the rents for some of these units or an example of what sort of rents could be?
Yeah, Mark, if you don't mind. Yeah, yeah, just so, no, up at the podium, just so.
Um, no, just the rents. And actually, I don't know if with this change, there would be a change in units, like what the percentage of affordable housing would be. And, you know, according to the percentage, how many affordable units would be, it would be complex.
This would be kind of the program, 25%.
25%, okay.
Now it'll be split up. But it'll be enough for a unit next, one, two, three. 25% on that, 25% on that. 5% on that, 10%. And that's how that would be. And the rents, you know, we've underestimated what we think rents are today. You know, it's going to take us, you know, a year or under a year to design the building, call it a year and a half to build it. So it's, it's hard to say what rents will be in two different years. I think it's kind of, anyway, yes, all we can do is just tag what we think the rents are today. And we've looked at what the rents are, which we probably should be similar of that self-lead by the, by the airfield, Southfield comments, mass like.
Okay. So what's your best guess?
Yeah.
Is that, is that what?
Yeah, I think that's your, yeah, that's good. Best guess.
Yeah. For, for what, one bad or two bad?
For all three, all three.
I don't have them off the top of my head, but it's.
I'm looking for that. Do you?
Got a P E L.
Yeah, but I don't, your P, your.
We haven't.
We may not have. No, you're back up in here. You just have your P E L.
Right, so the P E L, so we think the, if it's public, it was going to have a public, a little bit of a.
I'm looking at your LIP application. I didn't see it in there either.
Anybody else? The general public have any questions, comments? Anybody else on the board have any questions, comments?
If I may, Chair.
Mark, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, if I may, and I apologize for not bringing this up. One update and I apologize for those in the public or I don't know if it's broadcast. You'll see that there has been an updated site plan in, in the package that you have from May. So since the May meeting, we met with Chief Nuttall, Captain Cottle and Deputy Chief Glenn. And they had raised some concerns and with crossing into the opposing lane in terms of code. We have since, as I mentioned, met with Captain, Chief Nuttall. And we've made this now all one way to be able to keep with the code.
The what all one way?
The, the parking lot entrance. Except for the small satellite.
So you can, you can see the, you can see the runway arrows.
Yeah.
And also this entrance was flipped. And also this entrance was, was flipped. This entrance was flipped so that the truck wouldn't have to do a quick S turn.
I think fifty hours.
Yeah.
She, she ever respond to that?
We were, I had one question for you, which I'd have to point out on here. Sure. But, but, and, and, just, just, you mean it's that executive de transformer? That is where we have a temper. Again, it could be whatever, we'll work with you and that.
That, this was the only area where it was very tight based on that, so that could be moved. Um, based on this, and we spent a lot of time going by the traffic direction what the fire department thought would be. Obviously, we're gonna defer it to you. You, you may have a different view of this where the traffic dumps out on the moneyway, but instead of having it both ways all around, they proposed really an innovative idea to have it just one-way all around. And the more we looked at this, we, we actually kind of agreed with that, to be honest with you. So, um, we, I was prepared tonight to basically say, I, I think the fire department would be satisfied. This is completely changed. I'm not sure what direction it's gonna go now, but based on the original one, Friday hearing, all of the other things, we were pretty good with this traffic plan from the fire department. Thank you.
Anything else, Mark?
Um, no. Thank you. More questions from the public or the board?
No, I think the public's all set. Board all set?
On the rents, yeah, we'll, we'll follow up and, and we will submit it to Cassie through
the chairman and you can reach out to...
Some people know what...
Sure, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you can request from Abby, the, uh, sorry, Cassie, uh, our project eligibility letter, which will have that in there.
It's not in there.
Not in the letter, in the application, which we'll submit. Sure.
The application wasn't submitted.
And, and what they submitted to us tonight with this updated plan, Cassie's gonna put it up tomorrow on the website. She'll scan it in, so you'll have availability for that too. Okay.
So, so...
No, I'm sorry, Rick had a question, I think, first, which...
Could we, could we ask Marketing Company to provide something with regard to, uh, visiting the easement question of...
Oh, I was gonna defer to Amy on that one.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I was gonna ask too about the easement.
Yeah, so what do you suggest? Where do we go from here?
I suggest that they either come back with a deed showing that they own that easement now or we consider it an easement and we consider it 50 feet that can be a passageway and a road as any road is used in Abington. Utilities and everything.
So that would not be enough of a buffer?
I don't, I wouldn't think so.
Yeah.
I don't think we can rely on that being a buffer. I think it's a problem. I'm not sure what else they can do.
I guess they could submit a new plan with just one building on the other side of the street.
Right, showing, showing a buffer that, yeah, without showing that 50 feet.
Right, without showing that 50 feet.
Could we pose this as a question to Marketing or a request to have them address the issue of the, the buffer area and how that might impact the layout of the property?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can't, you know, what the owner of that easement, if he wants to, I can't really speak to that, right? Um, if he wants to invest that much time and money to, to clear that, you know, like...
Well, I know, but yeah, it's, it's like a question of, apparently it was, at some point, there was a proposal to sell it to you, the easement.
Sure, yeah, and I can't, any conversations, you know, so I think everyone's aware, we do not currently own the land, right? We have an option to purchase it. So any conversations that were had with the current owner, I can't, I can't really comment on. But I, I think the issue is we can't use that 50-foot easement as part of what we're looking at as far as the buffer zone. So...
Sure.
Uh, my suggestion on that is I understand that the board doesn't want to have that. That's the board's priority. We'll come back with some, what we think is, uh, relevant information about screening, which may or may not be something different. How that, I can't predict for this. But we'll come back and provide you with our best answer about screening. Uh, screening doesn't mean the buildings are gonna be secure. I don't think that's what Cliff and Sean have suggested. But we'll come back to you with the best information we can and the board will have to make a decision about that.
And do you plan on coming back with a more detailed plan as far as landscaping goes, as Cliff has suggested?
Yeah, I, I think we'll go back. My suggestion about next steps here, you know, we had submitted, as Mark said earlier, we had submitted this stuff 10 days to two weeks ago. We could have made more progress if we had had some back and forth and some response to that stuff before tonight. So our plan is to go back, take our best shot at responding to all this. We're really hoping we've got one more, one more, we normally need an extension to do it, we've got one more extension and one more hearing. We're gonna submit our best shot. We're hoping that the consultants and the chief will look at that and we'll have our responses back and forth before the next hearing.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. You said there was a two-week period where there was nothing happening. Well, the phone works both ways, right? You could have picked up the phone and said, hey, huh?
We did.
We did, we did, yeah.
We did. So, uh, that is what it is, but I think for the next round, the, our goal is to guys get the information, so that the peer reviewers, the board, the public, everybody can look at it.
Makes our, makes our job a lot easier.
Right, well, the plan that we submitted, we submitted, the public, they didn't see the presentation tonight, but the plans were previously submitted.
Yep, I understand.
So, so they're part of the public record. Um, and we'll do the same for the next round. But we're really, I, I think we're at the point of, you know, we've heard the board, we've heard the peer reviewers, we're gonna take our best shot at coming back with what we're gonna come back with. And then really we'll be after the board to decide what to do.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I found, um, their, um, market rental comparables. So they've looked at, um, it looks like Pembroke Woods, Madera Marshfield, Webster Village, The Commons, The Mast Light, MEO, Avalon, Easton, Paulstead, Abington. So the average, um, effective rent for a one-bedroom is 2,028. The average for a two-bedroom is 2525 and the average for a three-bedroom is 3,053. 3,053, 3,053.
And those are the market rating?
Yeah.
And this, this is a snapshot from...
So the rental, they don't have the affordable, so the, the affordable, we'd have to...
We can get that later.
She'll, yeah, she'll get it to you. She has the number, but you can, you can take that down.
I just wanted an idea. I can...
Yeah.
We don't, yeah, we don't set the affordable rents. Um, and that, just to...
Yeah, this is just a...
This is a snapshot time frame that was submitted, which was probably about eight months ago.
I think it was August of 20, almost 2018. Right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little confused. Are we supposed to, if we have questions, we're supposed to go to you and then we're supposed to eat, you know, that?
No, no, no. There's no, none of that.
That's the impression I'm getting from...
Everything we do has to be done.
Right, exactly. That's the impression I'm getting.
But the peer reviewers can talk to these folks. Okay, things, yes, yeah. Okay, so I guess our next step is to set a meeting, correct? What are you looking at at night? Um, I mean, I, I think it, apart from, um, seems most of our meetings have been on Thursdays and that...
Thursdays is preferable, yes. I think July 14th. Yeah, July 14th is our regular meeting, so we prefer something different than July 14th.
Blue book, here it is.
How much around last week of July?
So you're not around on the 28th?
Uh, I'm looking here. I'm not around, um, sorry, it's going crazy. 25th to 28th.
Okay, so you're not around that. Okay, so, um, I guess we might be looking at August 4th?
August 4th?
It's already, I mean, it's June 30th, that's only...
It's a month. It's 7, August 4th, okay?
We will read it August 4th, yes.
August 4th.
Let us know if you need us to submit another, what you require.
We do, because what, didn't that last one go only until today?
Yes.
So we need one tonight from you.
Well, that one, I believe, extended it...
You did.
Thirty days to July 14th.
Oh, okay, good. So, yeah, if we have that, I'll put it in my book. Do you wanna just write it out on, like, Monday? We can do it right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it is, if you don't mind, everybody.
So it is till July 15th right now, but if you wanna...
We're gonna extend it to August 4th.
Yeah. So our next meeting will be August...
Could you do to August 5th, not the 4th?
Oh, is that Thursday?
But do it to the next day.
One extra day.
Right.
Oh, to prior. The extension will be to the August 5th, but the meeting will be August 4th.
Meeting is August 4th.
Meeting is August 4th, 7 o'clock PM here at, hopefully in the courtroom. Yeah, all right?
7 o'clock.
7 o'clock, yeah. All right, anything else?